Good evening. It's 7:01 and we'll call the meeting to order. And all members of present will begin with the transmitting of Treasury Warrants 15, 15A, 16, and 16A. Do we have a motion?
To move.
Second.
Made the second and all in favor? Unanimous? And we'll move to the approval of the minutes of September 24, 2012, and October 9, 2012. Do we have a motion? Motion accepted as written.
Second.
Made in second and anything further? All in favor? Unanimous? Our 7 o'clock appointment this evening is with Scott C. Garant. He's the Chairman of the Fourth of July Committee and it's regarding a request to use the Town Common for tree lighting ceremony on December 1, 2012. Good evening.
The earliest possible day this year, we're always the first Saturday of December and we're December 1. As we started last year, we'll be, the time will be 4 o'clock. We'll run from 4 to 6 o'clock with the hayrides. We anticipate having carolers, certainly cookies and hot chocolate as we always have, and clergy from various parishes in the town of Wilmington. Santa will arrive at 6 o'clock and, as he's always kind enough to do, light the trees on the Common for us. And then he'll be available inside the Fourth of July Building for photos with the good boys and girls of Wilmington. We'll also have the community fund sales of tree ornaments. We expect members of the Wilmington Fire Department to be present collecting toys for Wilmington children. And we'll have the annual ice sculpture sponsored by the Wilmington Chamber of Commerce and other community groups. As always, I'd like to thank the Board for its support, allowing us to use the Common and put on this event for the community. Also, Mr. Hull and all Town employees for all their hard work that goes into this and helps us put it together each year.
Very good. Anything from the Board?
Just that we often, as you know, we often are asked for our opinions or our approval to use the Common for various different events, but it's my opinion that this is exactly what the Common's for, so it's always a pleasure when I see Mr. Grant coming, because I know there's another great event coming that we're all going to be able to wrap our hands around and join together as a community. So, I'm delighted that you're here. I'm delighted we'll have 25, a lot more time of lights on the Common this year, too, so we get another whole week or so, right?
Absolutely.
It's very good. Looking forward to voting in favor.
Thank you.
Anything else? Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the use of the Common for the Fourth of July Committee to use on December 1 for our annual tree lighting ceremonies.
Second. And seconded, all in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you, folks.
Thank you again.
Good evening.
We'll move to our next regularly scheduled appointment with Diana D. Gregorio, President of the Wilmington Community Fund regarding available programs. Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thanks. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Okay, the Wilmington Community Fund, as everyone probably knows, we help a lot of people in town. We have a food pantry. We also help people with their fuel, electricity, utilities. And just in general, if anyone is needing any help, if they contact us, we try to assess their needs and then we try to address those needs. And recently, we, our food pantry was very low in food, so we sent out a note and all kinds of social media, and the town has responded outstandingly. We have received so much food, it's incredible. In November, we have a water bill that's, well, we have a letter that's going to be going out with the water bill as an insert. And in that insert will be ways in which you can help the Wilmington Community Fund. Because we do provide fuel and utility assistance, if you, you know, you meet the criteria, most of our donations can be made to the Wilmington Community Fund so that we can use that money to help people who need help. Our motto was people helping people. And we live in a great town, I'll tell you. Everyone has responded very, very well for our needs. So I want to thank everyone for that and look for our letter, that's going to be coming out in November, and that will tell you what our website is, where you can send checks if you'd like to send checks. It will tell you a little bit about all our programs and how you can help us. I also brought some cards and some flyers, if anybody would like to see any of those. I'll leave them here.
Great. Appreciate that. Appreciate your time and efforts and everybody who does all that work for you and the people who contribute. Anything else from the Board?
Just, once again, volunteerism at its best here in the town, and, you know, we're going to echo that all the time. Thank you.
It's really, it's great. It's fantastic. You know, we help, we have a program also to help, you know, we figure with the fuel assistance, you have a lot of families who need the heat, children, elderly people. We try to have a program for adopter family programs that help at the holiday. So we, you know, we try to meet as many of the needs as we can and try to address as many of those issues. So again, you know, we do have a website that you can go on and a hotline, a number on that on our website, so if anybody would like to go to that, and I'll leave these with you.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, just asking for a question if I can. Do you find with the economy the way it is over the last couple of three years, do you find there's more of a need, more calls for assistance?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Mm-hmm. Every time the food pantry is open, we have more and more people signing up. It's pretty sad.
All right.
So, again, the Wilmington Community Fund, we appreciate anything that anyone can give us for monetary made out to the Wilmington Community Fund, because that will certainly help us address the needs that we have to address.
And correct me if I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, if I may. Correct me if I'm wrong, I'm guessing that during the holidays, people become sort of more aware generally of the idea of giving. And you probably have more people that don't give throughout the year at the food pantry, I guess specifically, that will do drives and do holiday kind of things and bring food in. But you need people to be coming sort of regularly throughout the year and including summer. Is that typically, like after the holidays, do you see a dramatic drop off of donations and stuff? So I guess I...
And I think that letter that will be coming out in November really addresses all the issues and so that people can see what the needs are. Certainly with the food pantry, people are aware of that, and in the summer, the food does drop down because the schools aren't in session and boy scouts and girl scouts and those kinds of things. With checks being made out to the Wilmington Community Fund, if we do have a lull in the food pantry, we can take that money and put it towards, you know, towards those needs. But certainly, it's, you know, people are more aware in the holidays and they do give more in the holidays.
Thank you. Thanks for your volunteerism.
You're welcome.
Yeah, just to, besides the water bill, I know you get to work, do a good job getting the word out, but maybe you want to give the email or phone number out while you're here.
Well, our community fund website is comfund.org. Very easy to find. And then all the information on that website is on there. We also have an email and we also have a hotline number that you can call.
Anything else?
Just want to say thank you.
You're welcome.
I think that's it. Thank you both for the update.
Okay, and I'll leave this information here.
Excellent. Thanks.
Thank you.
Have a good night. And at that, let's move to communications.
The first item under communications is correspondence from Timothy Jones, Presiding Officer from the Department of Environmental Protection. It's regarding the final decision on the Wilmington High School. The document essentially details the basis for the conclusions that were reached by Mr. Jones, which is, of course, subject to ongoing litigation. Following that, we received just today, actually, correspondence from Kenneth Kimmel, who is the DEP Commissioner. This correspondence also addresses the matter of the town of Wilmington, Wilmington High School, and it reads as follows. "I adopt the recommended final decision of the Presiding Officer. The parties to this proceeding are notified of their right to file a motion for reconsideration of the decision pursuant to 310 CMR 1.0114E. The motion must be filed with the case administrator and served on all parties within seven business days of the postmarked date of this decision. A person who has a right to seek judicial review may appeal the decision to the Superior Court pursuant to MGL Chapter 38, 14-1. The complaint must be filed in the court within 30 days of receipt of this decision."
So just by way of information for the general public and obviously to the Board, the significance of today's quote-unquote "final decision," that was the official adoption of the recommended decision that had come down on October 12 that was issued by the Presiding Officer that was handling both of the appeals on the high school project. And I actually talked to Attorney Dan Deutsch from Town Council's office, who will join the Board in Executive Session at our next meeting on November 13. Ironically, we had scheduled that about an hour before the final decision came down, so the timing worked out pretty well. So we'll have an update for the Board in Executive Session on November 13, and certainly the general public should stay tuned for the expiration of this appeal period.
Mr. Chairman, I know we could say more and more, but I think it's just great news for the town, especially the children of the community, because, once again, they're going to be the true losers in this thing. And it's unfortunate, it's gone this far, and that's good news. That's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Continuing with communications, we have a letter from Kathleen Reynolds, from the Historical Commission, to Thomas Broderick, the Chief Engineer from the Mass Department of Transportation. And this deals with the Route 62 Middle Six Ave-Glen Road and Wildwood Street intersection. She's writing to express interest in working with the department with regard to their consideration of the fact that this intersection is within the Center Village Historic District. It's on the National Register of Historic Places. And she expresses concern about the relocation of the Veterans Monument, which is currently at the corner of Glen Road, and also requests that specific design consideration be given to using black light posts and fixtures for the traffic signal apparatus. We have correspondence from Jane Downing, the Chief of the Drinking Water Branch from the United States Environmental Protection Agency. This is a report concerning the results of a couple of testings that were completed on two water sources in the town of Wilmington, Brown's Crossing being one and Burroughs Wellfield. The document essentially addresses the water quality monitoring and notes that EPA has seen a rise in sodium chloride levels throughout various aquifers in New England as a result of de-icing on roads and parking areas. It's indicated in this report that over half to as much as two-thirds of the estimated 1,175 tons of road salt that apparently are showing up in the wells result from mass DOT winter maintenance efforts. And it further, she further goes on to state that EPA supports the town's continuing efforts to work with mass DOT and the DEP to identify ways to resolve the sodium and chloride issue in the drinking water. Just as a side note, I would mention to the Board that I've spoken with Shelley Newhouse, the Health Director, about this, and she has indicated to me that there's a meeting that she's been invited to by DOT. They're looking to meet with her in addition to a representative from DEP to discuss this issue, and that will be coming up on November 20.
If I may, ask Jeff for, this came up again last year, if I'm not mistaken. And we did, if I'm not mistaken, we also had Dawn Onisite, and I think Shelley came in and we sort of talked about what the town can do ourselves with either the chemical or the type of mixture that we use for de-icing. And there was some adjustments made to the materials that we use. Am I right about that, to your recollection?
Yes. The town, Dawn Onisite, the Public Works Superintendent, has made certain adjustments to reduce the amount of sodium put on the roads.
So, we're, you know, the town can do its part, I think, to the maximum of its ability while also maintaining safety on the roads. But this report says that at least half to two-thirds is coming from mass DOT, I guess ultimately probably from I-93 and other state roads. So it's, I guess, I guess we would hope that at this meeting with Shelley Newhouse and DEP and DOT, that there will be some conversation and hopefully some refinement of their plans and mixture, because this is, this is a bit of a dire, not dire, it's the wrong word, but it's a, it's a report that concerns me. You know, we looked, they had some data here that talked about what their levels were. Obviously, in 1961, the population was substantially lower, et cetera, but in 1961, there were six milligrams per liter or something, which doesn't mean a lot to me, but if you think about what it is today, to 242 milligrams per liter. Just dramatic increases that unchecked would continue to dramatically increase, and what are the ramifications to that on the environment? So I'm hopeful that the state will continue to collaborate with the towns and local municipalities and find better ways to melt ice without injuring the environment or people. That is all. Thank you.
All right. Next on the correspondence is an invitation from Lou Sumeglia, the Director of Veterans Services. This is just inviting the Board to participate in the Veterans Day Services, which will be occurring on Sunday, November 11, 11 o'clock, on the Town Common. Participants will actually gather at the, in the July 4 parking lot at 10:45 before proceeding to the Common.
Perhaps worth noting that Monday, I believe, will be quote-unquote "holiday," but just for clarification, we are having our ceremonies on this Sunday, the 11th.
The 11th, correct.
Thank you.
The Board has received correspondence from John D. Bergoshin. This is concerning, just advising the Board of a recording of a relinquishment of easement agreement at the Registry of Deeds. You may recall back on the May 1, 2010 Annual Town Meeting, it's actually Article 36, a petition article on his part. The town had an easement for a bus turnaround on Marion Street. The request was to relinquish the easement because it was no longer needed. Town meeting approved that, and he's just advising the Board that he's filed the documents at the registry. We have correspondence from Jeff Beckwith, who's the Executive Director at the Mass Municipal Association, and this is just announcing that the Municipal Association will be holding their 34th Annual Meeting and Trade Show, January 25 and 26. This is, as you know, an event that draws municipal officials, elected and appointed officials from across the state to gather and participate in workshops, listen to leaders in the municipal field about various issues, whether it's budget issues or ways to conduct business and government in a more effective way. And then, under Board to Consider, we have a couple of items. One item is a request submitted by Attorney Robert Peterson. This is on behalf of his client concerning the execution of a confirmatory easement for 23 Cook Street. Back in 1996 at the Annual Town Meeting, there was a request at the time made to grant an easement that would allow for the owners of the property, at the time the Sullivans, to cross over town property to access their property. The property has since changed hands a couple of times, and the title insurance carrier on this most recent transaction is looking to confirm that the easement transfers with the property. So the Board, if the Board elects to approve this, would be confirming that, in fact, that is the case. This would require a vote by the Board and execution of the document.
And this was all reviewed by council, right?
Yes.
Any questions, comments, or a motion?
I'll make a move. Okay, make a motion to grant the easement.
I'd second that.
Made in second and anything further? All in favor? Unanimous?
Also on the docket for the Board to consider is a request that was submitted some time ago, actually, to the Board, a request to change the name and change the owner on a flammable license from Dom's Mobile, doing business as Petro Group, to Wally Daya, doing business as Ivana LLC for property located at 603 Main Street. You may recall that this issue had been deferred on a few Board meetings due to the fact that the property owners, there was, they owed taxes on this piece of property. Based upon some correspondence that I sent to Mr. Daya in response to the Board's request and in addition to a couple of phone calls that I made to Mr. Daya, he did come in and pay the taxes in full, I think, based upon recognizing that the Board was serious about this issue and perhaps prepared to not grant the license. He came in and paid in full. So it appears to be squared away. It would suggest, though, that the Board, when considering a vote on this, make it subject to confirmation of, that the check clears.
How much was, how much money were we talking?
It was actually a total of $11,480.63. This was based upon unpaid taxes from fiscal '12 and the first quarter of '13. There was also included in there some personal property taxes that were owed.
All right. Do we have any questions, comments, or a motion on that?
You know, the Department had pulled on this earlier, right?
I'm sorry?
Did the Department have police and fire and everybody?
Yes.
The first time we were going to vote on it.
That's right. The Fire Department had no issues from their end and the Town Clerk had no issues on her end.
What about the police? Were they involved in this at one time?
Not that I know of. I don't have any particular recommendation from them. I think it was just the fire and the Town Clerk.
All right.
I think, I think I know the one you're referring to, and I might, could be wrong, but I think it was another property. I think.
I think it was the same property, different...
Is that right?
Different client.
Yeah, I think that's, that's right. It was a different applicant.
Different applicant.
Yeah, same property, different applicant.
On a place down the street.
I remember that now, too.
Stayed down there. Everybody was there at one time.
Yeah, different applicants.
There was a problem down there. Okay, no, no, good.
This transfer would just require a vote of the Board and then a signature by the Chairman.
I'll move that we approve the transfer of license.
Actually, a change of name and change of owner on the license.
All right, so I'll move that we approve the change of name and license for Dom's Mobile, doing business as Petro Group, located at 603 Main, pending the clearing of the check.
Second.
Made in seconded, anything further? All in favor? Unanimous? I believe that concludes the regular business before the Board. Do we have any public comments? Seeing none, new business or committee reports?
Just wanted to mention that I had the pleasure of attending the MMA Legislative Breakfast with Town Manager Jeff Hall and with fellow selectmen, Mr. Shampoo. I know Mike has some notes here, so I'm going to leave it to his capable hands to give you an update, but I just want to let you know that that was my first one that I attended. And it was very nice to be able to meet fellow Town Managers and selectmen from other communities and hear some of the commonalities among all the various towns and cities around us and some things, you know, very much the same and slightly different. So it was a really good experience.
Yeah, thank you. I don't have any copious notes, trust me. But it was a good session. It was held at Bill Recker Town Hall, and the tenor of the day was really just to talk about transportation. And as we go into the next fiscal year, the legislators that were there, state representatives and some of the Massachusetts State Senators, commented quite a bit about how their focus will be as they go into the next legislative session, ensuring that transportation issues are addressed, everything from dams to roads, highways, Chapter 90 funding, lightening the burden on Town Managers and our finance committees so that Chapter 90 funding that is promised can actually get into the bank accounts of the towns so the towns can engage in some of these projects. So it was, it's always fruitful for me to participate in these sessions because you hear it really from the folks that are up on Beacon Hill and talking about the issues that they're taking on on a daily basis in some cases. There were other discussions that came about, some about renewable energy programs, solar, et cetera. And some discussion was had about regionalization, and I know that's a subject that has come up in the past, and it may or may not be tremendously applicable to Wilmington. It certainly is applicable to some of the smaller population communities, especially as you go out to the western part of the state. And regionalization is effectively, as I know you guys know, the sharing of resources across town borders. So it's sharing of police, fire, perhaps it's even sharing of veterans agents, things of that ilk. Again, I don't know that it necessarily applies to us. One area where it was raised and some other folks talked about it was potentially the sharing of dispatch resources. So, you know, is there a sense behind having a couple of communities have one dispatch that services them all? So that was one that I circled with a question mark, wondering if that's something that the town has looked at or if we should look at, and I suspect, Jeff, at some point, maybe we can have a conversation about that and determine if there's any feasibility there or not. So that was our experience, or at least my experience, from the other day. I will also let you know that I have, by virtue of this evening handing my form to Beverly, I will be registering to attend the MMA Conference, and I hope that some of you from the Board will join me there. I know that Jeff has been and Lou has been in years past, so hopefully you guys will be there as well. And I just want to close myself by saying that the community fund, comfund.org, we heard it earlier tonight, I'll just repeat it. During the holidays, the people of Wilmington typically come out and are remarkably generous with food donations and financial donations to help the less fortunate. If you go to comfund, C-O-M-M-fund.org, find ways to help the community and help people out. Help out your neighbors, and that's what we're all really supposed to be doing, is helping each other out, especially at the holidays, but also year-round. So I hope, and I know that the Wilmington population will respond, so thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just wanted to add one other item, if I may, is just to let residents know that the new committee, the Entail Farm Development Committee, has had its second meeting last week, and we also have one coming up on November 15, which is open to the public. We meet traditionally in Room 9, but that may be subject to change based on this room already being booked, so we've utilized Room 4 previously in the Town Hall. So we are off and running at this point. So we are off and running at this point. We have met with the athletic director, Mr. Ed Harrison, in detail. We're trying to get some feedback from the schools, from the children themselves. We're going to figure out a way to work that through, to get some public feedback in that arena, as well as work through the Recreation Department, through Elderly Services, and with all of the various sports organizations and other philanthropic organizations within the town. And then there'll also be some advertising publicly to try and get some feedback from the community as to what residents would like to see at Yentile Farms. Certainly, the space is limited in the sense that it's not all usable and able to be developed. But at this point, we really want to give the public an opportunity to kind of weigh in on the area and what we as a community would like to see there. So it is a community decision. It's something that will take some time to develop and our ideas will be thoroughly vetted through. And certainly, we'll be back in touch with the board with a more detailed update, but we are off and running.
Excellent. Thank you. What dates?
October 24th is a drop off at the, on Old Main Street, 8 to 2 o'clock in the afternoon. October 26th is the Cairo Luxur Fund Committee's hosting of the Jolly Rogues Middle School Auditorium at 7:00 PM. October 27th is another brush drop off, Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. October 28th is the Horables Parade Rotary Park, 4:30 PM. Then again, October 29th through November 30th is the Curbside Collection of Yard Waste. October 31st, a brush drop off, Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. November 3rd, another brush drop off at Old Main Street from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. November 6th, of course, is the state and presidential election. Polls open from 7:00 AM and close at 8:00 PM. November 7th is another brush drop off, Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. November 10th, a brush drop off, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And then November 11th, the Veterans Day Ceremony will be held on the Town Common at 11 o'clock. Also, just as a note, town offices will be closed on Monday, November 12th. On November 13th, the Board of Selectmen will be having their next meeting. And then the, as Selectman O'Connell said, on November 15th is the next meeting of the Yentile Farm Development Committee, which will be here at the Town Hall at 7:30 PM.
Have a motion to adjourn.
Some motion.
Seconded.
Men seconded, all in favor? Unanimous?